Is Scott going to join us?
He's gonna be available. He's not here first off.
He's doing opening prayer and all that.
We get it. We got it. We got it lined out. I've been working on since eight thirty. Whatever.
I trust my SMU Mustang.
Do the best I can with what I got to work with.
Man, I tell you, you good.
All right, this is a regular meeting of the Chambers County Commissioners Court. Tuesday, the ninth day of June twenty twenty nine thirty-two. At the county courtroom, we are zoomed. And we're gonna have the, all the agenda items, we're gonna try to take care of today. And then we're gonna also have Cory do our opening prayer and I'll do the pledges. Cory, you mind? Give him some prayer, please?
Yes, sir. We just come here today and we just think of this day, thank you for your love, Father. And, Lord, just as we ended up last week, just that that tropical depression or storm that was crystal that was out in the Gulf that it would spare our county and not issues. Father, we just praise you for answering that very properly. And just continue to ask for provision as we continue through this COVID issue. Just ask for continued protection over our county. Continue to be pretty low, but just, just ask for continued protection on our citizens, Father. And we just pray for this court as we, as we come together today to do the do work for the county and just ask that you give us wisdom in all of these decisions to just help us to do work in your name and we pray these things in Jesus' name.
Amen. Amen, the pledges?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic which is ours. A nation under God and visible, liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God.
First order of business is citizen comments and we have none at this time. And so we're gonna get an update from Mary Beth or Ryan, maybe both. COVID nineteen deals, so we're gonna go to them first.
And they're joining, should be joining now.
Ryan, Mary Beth, y'all out there? I don't see you. Can you hear me?
I'm zoned there.
I see the name.
Are you mute, Ryan?
He's, uh, working on that right now, Commissioner, I'm texting him.
Is this your agenda or mine? Okay, this way. Well, this is mine. Hey, Mary Beth, good morning.
One, one second.
Okay. There were little technical difficulties here this morning, that's why I came.
All right, can y'all hear us now?
Yeah.
Mary Beth.
I can't hear Mary Beth.
She can't hear us yet. Hey, Ryan. You didn't see me. Oh, she did see. She sees me, but she can't hear us.
I'm gonna try a different way of recording.
She hears us?
Well, but we can't hear her this.
Is her mic muted?
No, it should be unmuted.
Say something, Mary Beth. Oh, can I read your lips? You can hear us, but you can't, we can't hear you yet.
Can I should do sign language?
Read sign language.
Maybe go to another item.
Okay.
Maybe a couple minutes.
We'll come back in just a few minutes, if that's okay, okay? One point one, discuss and consider appointments to the Chambers County Twenty Twenty Census and Redistricting Committee, Allison Bass, M D. Okay, we have, uh, Billy has one appointment that's been made. And I think the tax office has two. And we can approve those and if for any, any of y'all out there that has a question of what they're gonna do, I'm in the same boat and I, Brad is here. He's here with, uh, he's gonna chair that committee. And I don't know if he can give us any insight of what they're, what they're gonna, he doesn't know either what they're gonna do. So I've had, I've, I've visited with several people, but that's the same thing they asked me and I can't tell them. I don't know. Jimmy, have you, have you talked to anybody yet about serving on this committee?
I have not.
Mark?
I have not.
Do y'all need to know, y'all need to know what they're gonna do?
Gary.
Yes, sir.
The information that came out a few months ago said that they would be working with them on drawing the redistricting lines for recommendations to the court.
Well, those redistricting lines are gonna be done by the attorneys. They may have some input, but they're, they're gonna, the attorneys are gonna do the redraw. Brad's gonna talk to us. Can y'all hear him? Brad's gonna, Brad's gonna tell us a little bit about it.
So with the limited information that I've got, we're not going to actually may, but I think our input is just to simplify this thing and maybe to offer because the things, the tax office, they are constantly looking for, to me, for help where our boundaries are voting.
You're talking about voting precincts?
Voting precincts, yes. Again, I think our role in this is just to kind of simplify the boundaries. It's not to adversely impact anybody, it's just a simplification.
So this on the redistricting agreement we did with Allison Bass consultant County Commissioners Court and it's designated Citizens Advisory Committee as needed by mail email. And we'll have a representative personally attend, no three physical appearances with the jurisdiction being reapportioned. These appearances will include a preliminary workshop with Commissioners Court and the committee and not present additional meetings with the coordinate and discuss each alternative plan devised by Commissioners Court. I don't think it's much, I mean, it's, you know, three meetings, but if you, it's in the Allison Bass agreement that we signed.
If you can resend that? That, that briefing out where y'all have it and
How soon do we need to, how soon do we need to have that name into you?
Well, I think about next quarter will be good. I mean, we've got, we've only got three right now.
Okay, that'd be fine. I'll get, I'll find somebody.
Mark, you try to find somebody to serve on that committee?
Yeah.
So, uh, I'll entertain a motion that we accept the
So moved, Gary, Judge.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tice makes a motion. Commissioner Gold makes a second. Any discussion, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Oppose? Was there a question?
No, sir, no.
Okay. Motion carries.
They should be ready now, Commissioner.
Okay, now we're gonna go back to the the COVID nineteen update. So Mary Beth or Ryan, you out there? Well, I see the screen, but y'all, y'all gone. Oh, there's Ryan. Come on around, Ryan.
Oh, and
You need to move your camera, move, move your screen around where I can see you. I see you now, okay, I got you.
Uh, looks like they didn't get, uh, join audio.
There's Mary Beth.
Okay, I want to go back to the
If y'all would mute, uh, YouTube stream. Beating back. Do y'all still have? Y'all still have the YouTube stream playing on the screen? If so, can y'all mute that?
Is that better?
Yep, sounds good.
Your own. Thank you, Mary Beth. Mask can hear us, I guess. You can talk. Okay.
Oh, yeah, close out of that, that tab. Yep, okay.
I can't see you now, but
I can hear you.
Okay.
Uh, one, one second, Mary Beth. There we go.
Okay, I can see you now. Good morning.
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 Okay, so, uh, have an update on the, uh, current COVID situation. And I did send out numbers to each of you yesterday evening. And as you're aware, our current case count is at eighty-three. And we've already had a pretty active morning this morning with new positive cases this morning. Uh, we sent out, um, we were late yesterday in updating case numbers because we currently have a case investigation going on um, over in East Chambers County and, um, the school, with the school district. And they are aware, the community for the most part is probably being made aware. And we will send out a public health statement to the school and let them send that out. And there was a, just a positive case in the school district. Um, at summer school, the school has been very proactive. And, um, all people who were involved, all children and schoolteachers who are involved in that have been contacted. And so we just want to reassure everyone, um, that if they have not been contacted, it means that they are not at risk um, of being, um, under monitoring or home isolation. So we are currently following up on that. So we currently have eighty-three confirmed cases. Again, we already have a few more this morning. We currently, currently have, um, forty-seven PUIs, meaning we're waiting on forty-seven lab results to come back. We have twenty-two under home monitoring and that number will go up today as well. We have sixty-two recovered cases and two currently in the hospital. And then like our public health statement said yesterday, and we have three new pediatric cases. And I know as you're aware, we did not really have any pediatric cases um, until basically this last week. And what I'm considering is really a younger pediatric population. I think we've had two, um, under the age of ten in the past week. Um, our, we've had a twenty-two percent increase in cases in the past week and a ninety-three percent increase in cases since Texas started reopening, um, the beginning of May. And this is basically a trend Texas-wide. Um, the fourteen-day total over, uh, the past two weeks, there's been a seventy-one percent increase in Texas. Um, so it is concerning statewide. And we get it, people are wanting to get out and do things. We just want to push that message of just um, trying to do things safely. And if you're at higher risk, really just try to stay home, wash your hands. Um, just really assess your own risk. Um, people really wanna know, what do our cases look like specifically in Chambers County? And most of the people who are being tested are sick. Um, they're going in and getting tested because they're sick. And some of their family members do go get tested, um, just to see. And occasionally those cases will be positive as well and they don't have symptoms. Um, but the majority of our cases go, um, go in because they are sick. Um, so we are urging people, you know, the minimum standards still by the governor are um, to remain in groups of less than ten. That still are, those are still the governor's orders. Um, and so, uh, you know, venturing out, just be vigilant and, um, you know, just still take all the precautions you can. We are, uh, still available by telephone. If y'all need us, please call and I'm available for questions if you have any, so. At any time. Thank you.
Mary Beth, do we have any questions for her while she's on?
Mary Beth?
Yes, sir.
If and when schools start back up, do you see them wanting all the kids to wear masks or, or everybody in school wearing masks? What do you think?
So, um, I mean, the T E A does have specific guidelines that they're working with the CDC. And I know specifically in Texas with D S H S. I mean, there's already criteria for less than ten years old, you know, there's really, you know, there's specific guidance on that. Uh, we are urging everyone and East Chambers specifically, they had screening um, before, you know, kids even went to school. And we really wanna commend them for doing that and all school districts for doing that. Um, so when schools back up, we open back up, we know there's gonna be specific guidance for, you know, say, for example, like social distancing, six feet apart, smaller classes. Um, and that's gonna be, and I think T E A is really gonna push that guidance. And I think that what happens in summer school and what happens in cases over the summer is really gonna help define what happens when schools reopen in August. So we're also urging parents, if you're sending your kids to summer school or if you're sending your kids to summer camp, make sure they're being screened and make sure you tell your kids about hand washing, not touching your face. And because we know it as adults, that we wanna make sure our kids understand what social distancing means and, you know, those types of things. So that's a good question. Anybody else? Thank you.
Does Ryan have anything you wanna add?
No, not at all. Thank you. I was just here for support.
Okay.
Had to participate in the technical difficulties.
Y'all sound good. I mean, since we got rid of that double feed stuff, whatever that called us. Okay, well, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
Be around if we need you later.
We'll hang out.
Okay, thanks. We're moving pretty fast here. This is seven point one. And that's, uh, buildings, the maintenance and buildings. Discuss and consider the purchase of additional office spaces for county, uh, offices. And Aaron, do you have it? Would you wanna give us some up? Oh, there you are. You gonna give us some update on this? You need?
No, yeah, more commissioners. Uh, so seven point one, we've kinda, we're trying to figure out how to kinda solve our office space issues that we have. So we've, we've come up with a plan to, um, look at that. So if you look on page, go to page thirty-four in the packet, you know, we talked, uh, kinda give a layout of what we're kinda looking at. So, uh, that would include getting a portable building, ten offices and a conference room for the DA's office. You know, the DA doesn't have much room, you know, they're piled on each other. So this would help alleviate the problem. Um, we would also add parking to that. You can see we added parking to the lot by dispatch. And we would put a little small parking lot at the old carpenter's building and add parking where we bought the lot, um, by Stole Street. So we added extra parking, portable building on Stole for the DA, it's an office and conference room. And then we're also looking at personal building for the new county court of law that will come on January one. So we gave a little price layout to show. It's on page thirty-five. Total cost of the project, approximately, you know, a million dollars. We have a good quote for the county court law. Uh, we've updated it since, since I posted this on, uh, well, since it's on the agenda. Um, so I don't think we're ready yet to purchase that. You know, lots to get, y'all's blessing on buying the portable building and kinda overall project. You know, we're gonna use
You did say that there's one ready to be.
Yes, the DA, yes, sir, the DA portable building, we're ready to go for.
And we have Cheryl on the phone. Do you have anything to add to that? Could you hear, could you hear?
I can hear it. I know, it, it sounds, you know, the only thing I wanna add is when uh, I'm looking at the, uh, note from Aaron that lays out the portable buildings and the first paragraph says, um, about the district attorney's office that remaining four offices are vacant at this time. They won't be vacant. We've definitely got something and some things, people we can put in there. And I just wanted to be clear that that office is strictly for the district attorney, cause it has to be, it it has to be secure as well and locked.
That's, that's a good thing to put your claim on before somebody finds out you have a vacant office.
We're not really open to the public.
Right.
It has to be secure and locked at all times. It's a safety issue. And, um, believe me, there's plenty of things that we can use those offices for. Um, I mean, we're on top of each other over here and I know that everybody else is too. I'm not, I know that we're not unique. But I just wanted to be clear that we're, those offices will be used.
We'll make sure we take the vacant off the four office.
Yeah, because we're gonna use it for, uh, for hustle for victims and also for, um, defense attorneys to do discovery and, and things like that. So it looks like a really good setup. I'm really excited about it.
Okay, is this gonna open up your, your building where you're at now, Cheryl? Will it be vacant?
I'm sorry, what? No, 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 we're gonna here as well, um, because we have, we have plenty of staff to go and move.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I just wanna make a comment. I like the idea. I like the layout. I think it's the right move and getting some office space. Much better than some of the other things we were looking at.
I agree, Billy.
You know, we've been operating basically with one arm behind our, uh, backs for, for years now. I've always felt like we're doing it a disservice to the victims that have to come in here because we don't have a place for them to really go and, and be able to talk um, confidentially, you know? And so I think it's gonna be good and it's gonna be more comfortable and I, I appreciate y'all doing this.
Thank you.
Move for approval. Move for approval, Gary. Second, Gary.
I have a motion. Comes by Commissioner Tice, and that's for the approval of the district attorney's portable office building for the total cost of one hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars.
And when I get the updated quotes for the county, I'll, we submit that.
It was actually, it was actually a motion to purchase of both of the buildings.
So the We're not ready on the other one.
We're not ready? You just purchasing one at this time?
So, so you wanna, do you want to amend your motion? Yeah, we, right now, we're just gonna, we're just considering the portable office building for the district attorney for a hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars.
All right, I'll amend my, uh, motion to I'll amend my second to Billy's motion.
Okay. Again, you have that. Okay, we have that amended motion and amended second. Any other questions about this? So already, I'll, I'll entertain them now. Not, all in favor say aye. Oppose, motion carries. While we're here, seven point two. Discuss and consider status and direction moving forward with repairs at the Winning Stole Arena. And I did get some good news on that this morning that, uh, Mike said that the lights are gonna be taken care of. Jimmy, you got, you got anything to add to that?
No, sir. Uh, Mike and I are gonna meet next week. Um, after everything should be completed except the lights this week. The lights are four to six weeks out and, um, so we're gonna
Order, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir. They're having to be ordered. So when they get in, they'll just change them out all at the same time. And we're gonna meet out there next week and look at everything. We're gonna meet with Ryan, Kirk and Mike.
Emergency lighting? That's for the emergency lighting?
The emergency lighting generator, everything should be completed this week.
Okay.
So the only thing after this week here we should have left is the, um, lights themselves. So we're gonna meet out there next week and go over everything and see if we can, uh, get it opened up until the new lighting is in.
Um, I was looking here, I don't, I don't know that the cost is here on, on what we're fixing to do, but, uh,
Well, Mike said it was at no cost. I mean, what he
Well, the lights and stuff, but I mean, there's, there's some stuff that I guess we've done internally with the rewiring of the electrical boxes for the fans.
Yeah, we, we'd already approved that in court and all that's already been taken care of. We'd have to, I'd have to go back and look and see what the cost was, so.
Okay, well, uh, yeah, I talked to Mike, he said they were gonna handle that. And I see the wall packs for cost of eighteen thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. Emergency lighting generator. We've got a savings of twenty-six hundred.
But it's We had, uh, natural gas ran in there for that and that way we'll have access. So when, if we do anything else out there, we can tie into it instead of a diesel generator.
Yeah, that's what I understand, natural gas. Which was able to get it a little cheaper. And then we also installed a sink at the concession stand for a cost of one thousand.
Yes, sir.
Since we, since we did these, we've done this, I think we ought to approve it in a motion to that we've completed these, these projects and then we'll finish it one, when we get the lights, put it in. So I'll entertain a motion.
That's be my motion.
Okay, Jimmy, Commissioner Gold makes a motion. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Second, seconds. We may not need to, but I'd rather have it be say.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions or comments on this item? You're not all in favor? Okay, all opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're gonna we're gonna go back to three point one. Cory's here. Three point one is discuss and consider donation offered approximately two point two acres of real property from Hackberry Storage LLC to be developed by the county and jointly used drainage detention specifically status. And additional information needed for the court's cost benefit analysis. So going back to three point one. Cory, you have any comments that you'd like to make to the court on this item?
Uh, yes, sir. So, um, this was, of course, presented several months back as a, uh, potential swap that, uh, recommended that, you know, looked promising. It was basically approved to, to move forward with, uh, trying to work out details with, uh, Scott Hill, our attorney. And so in trying to work out those details, Scott came up with several good questions of which I didn't have answers for in particular. And really is what we need to do is hire a hydraulic engineer to look at how this correlates between, uh, the runoff with the proposed site that we're looking at swap with, um, and the potential Kilgore drainage project, uh, not Kilgore drainage project, the Kilgore Parkway project that will also have its drainage in the same area. So the conflict between those two is what is kind of a bit confusing and needs a more detailed look to make sure that we're doing it correctly. And I can't give a good analysis of cost benefit ratio, which was Scott's essential question without, um, some additional analysis. So I would recommend, I've talked with Bobby Hall on the history of this and I've talked with uh, the, the past drainage person that has provided some detailed analysis prior on Kilgore and how this might affect it. And we just need to update that analysis. And so, uh, I would recommend the court tabling this while I work with the purchasing department to acquire, um, that service and be able to analyze that to, to give an accurate cost benefit ratio.
Have we, have we got numbers put together on what we're gonna need for Kilgore Parkway? How much attention we're gonna need for Kilgore Parkway? Have we got those numbers or can we come up with those numbers?
We have some numbers, so there's this, this potential uh, easement is part of a actual ninety-foot easement that had been drawn out previously. So there's sixty foot, um, on one side of the property line. And this is a thirty foot that would be needed on the opposite side. Initially, so there's some discussion of what all that tension will pick up if and so there is some analysis, but we need to look at that part in detail.
Do we have any idea what time, timeframe we're looking at? Cause I Do we have any idea what time, timeframe we're looking at? Cause I, I want to say this has been more than a couple of months. I want to say this has been.
When I, when I initiated this, guys, this was, uh, twelve, a little, a little over twelve months ago.
It was, right. And so, um, I talked, well, so I think, uh, you know, once we acquire it, I don't think it's a deep, I don't think it's a real, I think we can get it pinned out in a month. I, I believe that the, uh, engineer should be able to do that, but, uh, I, I asked him for an update, but I've got to get with purchasing to make sure that we're good moving forward. So.
Hate to miss this opportunity. I don't know how, and we've, we've delayed that construction a good while, but Scott, do you, do you have anything to add? He's on the screen. I guess you seen.
I, I can't, I'm not looking at the screen.
I'll say he's, 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 he's listened to what we've been talking about and I, and I think we, at that time, at one time approved it pending Scott's, Scott's approval, I think this is.
That is correct. Yes, that was what we had to work out. And like I said, Scott just had questions that I, I didn't have the answers to. So we had recommended maybe moving away from it because without hiring additional.
But we're not, see, that's the thing about it. We're not necessarily able or ready to continue with the Kilgore Parkway extension. Part of the, part of the, um, the urgency was the fact that Moody, Moody's were going to build that. They had a contract to sell someone's space if they had to.
But the problem is, and you're right. So if we were just taking a donation and we could handle it down the road, you know, that would be an issue. I mean, that would be one thing, but the part of this is that we, we have to build detention for his development.
What is your, your Scott, uh, Corey, uh, what the, let, let's say you had to start building this detention next month. What is your projected cost to build the, that detention? Cause I've got prices over here I'd like to share and I just want to know what you've got.
Wasn't prepared to, to give that this morning, so.
I can't hear you?
He said he wasn't prepared to give that this morning. What is, what, what are you talking about? A Kiwi Guard price? You, that you have, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, you know, what I'm looking at here and, and, and I'm going to get Scott, obviously, to weigh in and clean up my mess. But as a businessman and a person that has bought over a hundred pieces of property in my lifetime, this looks like an opportunity that we have a willing landowner offering what we need already adjoining a road uh, we already have. Otherwise, uh, we're going to have to force an unwilling citizen to give up and to buy possibly three to four times as much because it doesn't adjoin the existing road. Opportunities don't go away. They're just going to go somewhere else. We're kicking this can down the road one way or other. Either we do this deal or down the road, we're going to be right here at this position again. And I went and looked at properties all up down thirty-one eighty and I was very, uh, this is a sidebar, Scott. I'm finding properties that are on the tax rolls for eighty-four thousand dollars, but when I went and offered the man eight hundred thousand dollars, he wanted a million. And I'm thinking this land is right down the road. Uh, I just don't see this dirt getting deeper. Clear me up, counselor. Why, why is my, and the willing landowner that's willing to do this land swap? And I know you'll get this, Gary, uh, uh, coming from your industry. Got a willing landowner saying, y'all don't have to travel with any dirt either when you do the detention. I said, why, Mr. Harmon? He said, you can dump it right here on my property. I've got a place for it. So I'm looking at trucking gone and everything. I got a couple of guys to take a peek at it and they're going high side one fifty, low side one hundred. Does that sound right, Gary?
Well, no.
Stop moving dirt.
So it's.
I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you're, you're talking about total cost, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so Mark, I mean, here, and here's some more detail. So it's not just digging a hole.
I understand that.
So it, it has to.
You're engineered, Doug.
Yeah, it has to be engineered. I mean, you have a piping system in, you have to have a burn that's built around it for maintenance. You have to have a spillway and rocker grab that comes down to protect the runoff from that spillway coming down into the detention. And then in addition, cost is, and the other thing that I had a issue trying to, I guess, determine what that effective cost is, is that we would have to maintain this for eternity, um, the way that it's looked at right now. So we're designing it, constructing it and maintaining it for life. And it's kind of different than other swaps that we've done where it's kind of hard to finger on it for that exact cost.
Well, not necessarily though, because we have, we've taken Enterprise ditch, which we maintained, we, we will have it. Main, I mean, the Enterprise built the ditch and donated it. We, we have to maintain it. I mean, we've got Kilgore Parkway that we've worked a partnership with. The county is responsible maintaining that. I don't see that being the.
That's not the pro, that's not.
A negative. I mean, that's just part of.
I know it's part of it, but what, but what's the cost of it? How much does that cost? Give me a number specifically.
So let me know when y'all are ready and I'll try and.
Go ahead, counselor.
Thank you. So as y'all know, y'all, uh, approved this in the past, uh, accepting the donation pending the approval of the county attorney. So I want to just clarify something for y'all. Um, I do always enjoy the trust that y'all place in me that I will clean up the language and make language beneficial to the county. However, I don't think that I can ever be the one to obligate county taxpayer dollars to an expenditure to clear up a contract outside of what y'all may consider, uh, in, in advance of that approval. So what I wanted to tell you in this particular instance is like I put in the email that I sent Friday afternoon to y'all. I hope y'all, I know it was late Friday afternoon, but I had six points on one of the things, of course, that I started off with was a donor may attach stipulations to donation and the county as the, uh, recipient may attach stipulations to receiving the donation. So what we have here is clearly, as I think I pointed out, um, Mr. Harmon's offer is extremely generous and there's no doubt in my mind that he believes the value of his land to the county more than compensates his expected use of the county improvements. But there are, uh, multiple issues related to accepting this donation that will be expenditures on the county, not just upfront, but in the future. So the engineer points out, Corey said, uh, you know, we've got this, uh, 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 permanent commitment to maintain property that we are going to be a joint user of and that's fine and y'all can do so, but I think y'all need to prove those, uh, through court, knowing what those full costs are going to be. So one of the main things that I wanted to emphasize was this part of one part of your drainage solution for Kilgore Parkway. Even if the number was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the cost of road and bridge employees. So that's our employee cost and maybe our maintenance cost of our equipment to dig and improve this two point two acres. That is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our internal cost, what we pay in salary and maintenance without going out to an outside bidder is my understanding. But this gets delayed further down the road. Now, the middle of road and bridge post COVID nineteen, you've got the cost benefit analysis of do you pay presumably more to go to an outside contractor? Or take road and bridge off of playing catch up with the, uh, duties that they have missed out on by the disaster declarations? So that was one of the things, you know, just a, a straightforward, say it costs a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Furthermore, you know, my original, uh, uh, information was that this thirty foot easement that was part of the two point two acre donation was only half of the drainage easement required to go from the parkway to the retention pond. I think I was updated and maybe y'all heard that there's actually perhaps a ninety foot easement. So we still have to acquire that additional land, probably at a cost. Maybe we can work something out with other, uh, people. But we don't have that additional channel to go from our, uh, main drainage area to get to this two point two acres. Some of the more important parts going from there, of course, is, uh, you know, if it was as simple as saying that the trade off is he's going to use one seventh of the retention that we build and design for his, uh, use and we use six sevenths of the land value, then yes, that's a win. That is clearly a win for the county. And of course it would be a win for, be a win for Mr. Harmon. But as you get into the math and the figures of how far over one seventh, I mean, if you, once you get to fifty fifty, if his, uh, acreage and use is going to be half of the, uh, uh, improvement usage, what else is going through there? What of his grandfathered land is actually going through there? I think from the map, I'm not an engineer, but I saw maybe some of his current, uh, grandfathered in drainage, uh, goes through the same area and would be in that area. I'm not, uh, uh, an engineer and so I had these questions, but I wanted to make sure that y'all knew before expending funds to improve this joint use property that would be donated to you, you knew what those numbers actually were. And therefore that's why I told Corey, you've got these additional questions. Y'all have to come up with the cost benefit analysis with good numbers that you can rely on before accepting this donation would be my recommendation. And then, uh, uh, you know, we went from there. But if you saw my email, you saw some of the things that I brought up, um, my recommendation.
It was a good email, Scott.
Thank you. I just want you to be fully informed before you commit to expending a lot of money.
Let me, let me add something to this. It's not the fact that, uh, that we're going to have a maintenance cost now. We've got that. We'll have our maintenance cost of the channel anyway. I mean, we're, we're having to drain Kilgore Park, Parkway. Uh, so we'll have that, that built in cost. Yeah, we may have a little additional cost because of the additional area. But our problem is getting to the outsourced. In other words, the channel. Not only will we have to condemn that property to get there, would, would, could be redundant. I mean, it could be right next to his existing channel. So, I mean, we've got, there's two things that's positive about this situation. We've got a route that's, that goes to the outfall channel. We don't have to sit there and condemn that right away.
That's very important.
And, and by, and which indirectly we'll have to do one of these days to be able to drain that, to drain that, that roadway. So because if we build detention by the roadway, still didn't get the water to the ditch is my issue. And, and this is an opportunity that I don't think we want to let go by. Gets that water, even though we're not ready to build it, even though it's going to cost a little money to maintain it, we're going to have a certain amount of cost there when we build that channel that's going, that's do that drainage. What?
Let me, let me say this another way. I could not protect the county by putting stipulations on an acceptance agreement sufficiently at this time to know what the numbers are. I, I can't do it. I don't have enough information and I highly recommend you not accept the donation without knowing what your costs are going to be and what amount of usage you're going to have. This is, this is, I did, I understand the desire to move forward and accept this donation, but without knowing fully what the repercussions are going to be, I, I caution you.
Hey, Scott, clarify, repercussions from what?
You do not know how much of that retention pond that we're going to spend money on improving is actually going. You, do you have a number on how much of the improvement in that retention pond we're going to be able to use? I don't have that number.
Scott, that is something that we looked at when we looked at this last year in conversations and Corey, you're on the line. Maybe you'll remember, I mean, we, you did a real rough, down and dirty percentage on it. And, yeah, I'm just trying to remember what that was.
That was in Corey's office. Am I correct at that DRC meeting?
I think it was.
Yeah, because it was very clear. And then I've shown.
It wasn't a totally engineered number, but it was a.
Right.
Ballpark. Corey, do you recall that?
Well, I think that's where Scott was talking about the one seventh of potential. I mean, the, what we were looking at was initially along Hackberry, the, the depth along Hackberry is extremely, there's good depth in that channel compared to the existing ground adjacent to it. So you could have a really, uh, a pretty deep, um, detention pond with good, um, a good amount of detention per, per acre, right?
Per surface acre.
Per surface acre.
And that's, that's really important.
It's important. You're right. And so that was one of the things that we were looking at that, that is valuable along this. And so roughly, uh, along the lines of, you know, I, I don't remember how much, but he's building two buildings. Um, I, I think my rough number was about one seventh of the potential, you know, detention pond that we could build in that triangular piece would be used by those two buildings now. But here, and here's, but this goes back into why we need some overall, I guess, additional because, okay, so on that ninety acres, uh, not, I'm sorry, ninety feet of the potential detain, detention ditch, and you, you get into the whole, uh, concern of not wanting condemning land. So that was part of the original of why we were looking at the ninety feet coming from the future Kilgore Parkway down to Hackberry because, uh, part of that is a sixty foot stretch on an adjacent property that's already separated out as a easement for drainage. But it's to, it is to drain the future properties of who we would be acquiring that property from. So also in this is the, the, the drainage uh, calculations that were done previous by the engineer incorporated those runoffs and for the eventual development of those properties. And then we were, we were hoping to get a donation. Well, we haven't got that donation of that easement. So we've got to look as a court of how to move forward with that. Do we want to get condemned? And if we condemn, do we, do we, you know, do we still, uh, detain the drainage, you know, for that property? And so all of that is a factor in what that ninety foot easement looks like. I mean, you got sixty foot plus the thirty foot essentially that would end up coming from Mr. Harmon now, all in that. And so.
That's through ninety feet.
That's the ninety feet.
Yeah. So we would have, if we had the ninety feet, that thirty feet, there would, would not be in, in, above in this problem.
Right. Now, in that triangular piece, what we, we looked at was, it was the, okay, so you're only detaining essentially for two buildings now because that's what's done. But under our old system, before drainage criteria was in place, several of these buildings were done and some of them were done through, uh, waivers because they met a minimum requirement.
So, but do we know where that water goes right now?
Well.
It's going eventually. I'll go to Hackberry.
It all goes into Hackberry. But the point is, is.
Is it going to need to go through our detention?
Yes. And so that's exactly where I was going is, and that's part of fusion is when I got, talking about this more in detail with Scott. That was one of the things that came up that complicates the calculations of it beyond what I can do myself. So the, although I did something rough and dirty, as, as I said, it, it needs to be, you know, because not only would that, going through that detention bond, you would do the two buildings that are being constructed now, but you also get into the, I don't know, eight to ten others that are already in place. So they're all going to run through the same detention system. And even though you're still picking up that water and detaining it, you're offsetting that amount, you're slowing that amount. You still have to account for it because it's going to be going through the system, which means that more of it might be going over the spillway during a heavy rainfall event and it's got to be designed correctly. Otherwise you're going to cause issues that the county is going to have to maintain because of that.
Well, even that acreage that we're talking about on the sixty foot, draining into it, it's a possibility that some of it's going to have to be detained on that property. Just because you have the channel, that doesn't mean they don't, they're not qualifying that as the drainage of their property. If it exceeds what was.
I think so. Right. You, you're right. And so I think there was a rough estimate of like zero point six five to zero point seven as the runoff coefficient, the runoff number that we used. And as you know, you know, if it ended up being a heavy, you know, industry or something like that, that was a lot of concrete, that could be end up, you know, being a larger number, which would cause onsite detention.
Which we've had experiences with.
Right. So we would detain it based, our, our agreement would need to be set based on this is the runoff number that we're allowing.
Well, let me ask you this. If, if, if you think you had another thirty days, could you come up with these rough analysis that possibly that we could?
I don't think we have another thirty days with Mr. Harmon.
How about next court, Commissioner's Court? I mean, that's not giving us much time.
If, if Georgia approves me being able to, to have somebody look at it, um.
I think, I, I think he's going to move forward if we don't, if, if. I think, I, I think he's going to move forward if we don't, if, if, well, 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 let's give it, let's give it, let's get it to next court. That's two weeks.
What's the cost of having him look at it, Corey?
He's, he's getting me an estimate now. I mean, you're probably.
Commissioner.
I don't, I mean, I probably, I don't know. I, I don't know. I, I would, I don't want to say because I, I don't know and I'm.
Would two weeks work for you to do some more? I mean, do, do you, do you need to do any more research, Scott? Or are you, uh, are you, is, is, is this your completed data and, and summary report?
No, that's my completed list of questions.
Okay, okay. All right. So.
Look, I'm a simple man, so y'all know my concern is if the original analysis was one seventh of the retention might be from his improvements in the future and his existing improvements are say four, five or six times that volume, then I would hate for the commissioner's court upon my approval and wording to have over half of a retention pond that we've paid to improve not be usable by us because of the, uh, existing drainage and future drainage that would go through it. Therefore, I want to make sure that we have those numbers in before reaching an agreement for which we might not be as much of a beneficiary as we are hoping.
I'll let Mr. Harmon know that we're, we're still researching, uh, some things and to give us a couple more weeks.
If you would like, you can share my email with him. I do not, you know.
You don't, okay. No problem. Uh, Commissioner Collins, real quick, uh, you're the pro here in, in, in real estate this far of the country. What does it look like just at the surface?
What does it look like, what now?
Uh, on, on, on this land, potential land swap.
Oh, the land price?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I personally, you know, we looked at this last year and at the time, I agree with everything you and Commissioner Nelson are saying. You know, it's a right of way that we need, we're going to have to take, if not it, one right beside it. It's the shortest distance that we can get to Hackberry from, you know, uh, the future Kilgore Parkway extension. I mean, on the surface, it's a very good deal.
Here's my next question. Let's say nothing ever happened, Mr. Harmon took care of his stuff. We're eventually going to need that, that land, uh, his land, uh, for easement. Am I correct?
Either that or something very close to it, you know.
High probability, because it's on, on Hackberry that we're going to need that. Am I right?
Corey, Corey can answer that question.
So.
Yes.
That 30 foot is something that we need, Mark. I mean, so, and, and I, just to clarify, my gut still says, it's just a matter of making the numbers, well, not worked out. I mean, it's showing, you know, I, we need the data to, to back it up. And so my gut tells me it's good. I, I agree with what y'all are saying. I mean, all of our guts are in the same spot, but I still got to provide numbers because legally it has to be shown as being a good deal for the county. And so.
Oh, I agree. I, I agree.
I mean, I, I think we all know that it is because ultimately the risk is we have to go back and, you know, we're in court, it's going to be drawn out and we need, we need Kilgore Parkway now. And, you know, ultimately the risk of it is we could be paying a lot more, you know.
Definitely be paying a lot more for the property.
You know, getting something and I, you know, if I was a juror, he was trying to hand it to you and, and now you're, you're taking it from him. So, uh, yeah, yeah, I'm giving him the world. And so, uh, in general, yes, I agree, but I still think we need to show it. So I, I do agree with Scott and that's the problem is I just haven't had the definitive answers uh, without more detailed analysis. So.
Counselors, let's move on. You can get that taken care of.
We're on table three, one, but we have a public hearing that we're supposed to do at 10. And, uh, so we'll table that till next court and hopefully we can get this resolved. Yeah, we can get BJ on the phone.
I'm good with that.
And, uh, we're going to adjourn from commissioner's court at little clock over there. 10:26. And move into, if everybody's okay, move into a public hearing regarding the Ameriport Business Park Building One LLC reinvestment zone. And I think, Scott, did you, you, you had some comments on this, but there, this is a public hearing. Do we have any public comments? I guess they have a number to call in. Is there a comment?
No, they were supposed to email it yesterday.
They were supposed to email it yesterday. So we didn't have any public comments. So I don't, BJ, you have a public comment? You, you're supposed to email it by yesterday. So apparently we don't have any. Since we have no public comments.
BJ, can you hear us?
We are going to adjourn back out of the public hearing, go back into regular commissioner's court.
Gary, can we take three minutes?
Uh, yeah, we can. Let's, let's, let's take three minutes for Mr. Tice. So we're on standby. BJ, you still there?
Yeah.
Okay. We're going to take three minutes.
Just three, Gary.
BJ, you want me to call you back?
No, it's fine. I'll tell you.
Okay.
We got hung up. I was afraid we would. We did.
I just want to sit.
You have 10 letters?
Kick it.
Yeah, the other is actually 10 letters.
Here we are back on live audio now.
Yeah.
Hey, Cal, sir. Always keep your commissioners in line, buddy.
Okay, we have a call.
You're sitting and done, right?
Okay, welcome everyone back. It's 10:32. We're going to go back into regular session of Commissioners Court.
Are you still there?
BJ Simon on the phone. BJ, you have some discussion on this on the Maryport Business Park Building?
Now, I wanted to reinform the court about the background. The application was approved by the court back in April, April 28th. Application for establishing reinvestment zone was approved on 26th of May. Just by way of reminder, this is a 297,000 square foot facility that's going to be built in the new section of Maryport, east of the Grand Parkway. And the tenant is going to create 15 jobs. So the notices were appropriately sent, published in the local paper.
Okay. I think that, I think the county attorney had some issues with something. Is he still there?
He just lost video. He took his cell phone video. Oh, here he comes, I think. And he's online.
Yeah.
Scott, do you have some questions that we, maybe for BJ that we needed to address for this?
No, 3.2 is, is different.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
I thought it was something I missed. So you're good with all this? What you've seen?
This is not something that I have reviewed or typically review.
All right, thanks. BJ, then, then you, you're good with 5.2? And the same thing with 5.3 and 5.4?
The, well, the court has to take action about the order to approve, the order to designate the reinvestment zone.
We hadn't done that yet. We fix them too.
And then 5.3 is simply a request, verbal request that in fact the order is approved, the reinvestment zone for the reinvestment zone, that, that starts the clock on the 30 day requirement. And that to request that the notice be published today so that the public hearing to approve the agreement be held on July 14th.
Okay, let me go back and, and I'm going to get a motion for 5.2, discussing, consider order establishing the Maryport Business Park Building 1 LLC 2020 reinvestment zone. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Judge.
That Commissioner Tice?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I'll have a second?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cohen, second?
Yes, sir.
Any, any questions or comments?
No, sir.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. And now 5.3. Consider notice of public hearing regarding a Maryport Business Park Building 1 LLC tax abatement agreement. Do we have any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve a publishing for public hearing for the Maryport Business Park LLC tax abatement agreement.
Tag it.
Yep. Commissioner Cohen makes a motion. Commissioner Gore seconds it. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Okay, all right, this is a different one. BJ, 5.4?
Yes.
Do you have any comments on that?
Just to remind the, the court, Black Creek Group, BCIF, Cedarport Logistics Center LLC, had a tax abatement application presented in January, January 28th, which was approved, the reinvestment zone averaged on March 10th. And that started the clock on the 30 day count to have the public hearing to approve the agreement. But because of the COVID, the, the public hearing was never held. Now that the court has capacity, demonstrated capacity to conduct public hearings, the request now is to conduct the public hearing to approve the tax abatement agreement on July 14th, 2020, Commissioners Court.
Okay, so I'll discuss, this is discussing, consider notice of public hearing regarding the Black Creek Group, BCIF, Cedarport Logistics Center LLC tax abatement agreement. So that will, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Commissioner Tice makes a motion. Commissioner Cohen makes a second. I guess they get that right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Thank you, BJ.
Thank you.
Have a safe day.
Thank you. Take care.
Take care, BJ.
All right. We jump down there for those items. So we're going to go back to 3.2. Discussing, consider approving agreement with national property holdings regarding the relocation and abandonment of a county right of way adjacent to Highway 99. All right, this is what Scott said.
Yes. I had requested that we table that based upon multiple factors. But if y'all did wish to discuss it, I would ask that it go into executive session so that we could discuss it under real property consultation with attorney and even potentially the other remaining.
So we'll, so we'll hold off on that and if there's any discussion, we'll take it to executive session.
Okay, 1-3-2.
1-3-2, yeah. All right, we, we have made it down to the consent agenda. I don't see any other items back here on the other side. Commissioner, one, what items would you like to pull and talk about? Or do you have anything?
9, 18, and 19.
Okay.
9, 18, and what?
19.
All right, let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and talk about approving the Gulf Coast Electric Company for County Double Bowel Community Floor Repair in the amount of $104,000. Okay, Commissioner Gore, what you got?
Okay, is it, I mean, this is all being paid for out of the Harvey Fund or?
Yes.
That's my understanding. Yes, yes.
They're just trying to figure out what all they were doing. They've just, yes, Mike and one down there.
Looked like it's been a good bit of money, but it's.
It's been, it's been a lot of money. Well, the main thing was, Judge, is they had a $50,000 contingency and it was only $54,000. So the $104,000, $50,000, that was contingency. I mean, that's why I was wanting clarification. Why did they have such a high contingency on that?
I'm not, I'm not aware. I don't, I don't know.
If you want, I can reach out to Mike Leslie. If y'all want to go to the next item and I'll try and call him.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, the other one is 18. Prove change order for 1409 in the amount of $14,637.48 to cut and restore concrete payment on broken, thin road.
Is Cory around there?
He's, he's still here.
Can he elaborate on that? Because I spoke with him a little bit today about it. I mean, did they get approval for this before they done it? They already done it? I mean, we really need to stay close on these change orders. I mean, directly with Kilgore and everything, we don't need to, we're kind of tied on the money on everything we do. We need to really stay on top of these contractors. Talking with Cory the other day, he seems to be digging in with them to, to hold them in place. But I mean, if he can elaborate to the court of what's going on here.
Yes, I, so my conversation with you the other day was on a different issue. And after pushing back with them, they found a different way of doing that within the limits of the contract. So, yes, I, I am, I'm working with them sometimes daily to ensure that we are minimizing the costs to the public of Chambers County down the road. So this is, it had to be done and it is already essentially complete. And, and that's going to be the process. Like I, you know, talked about before, you know, these things, if we, so this is for one of our drainage connections, our outfalls. And so if we was to hold up the drainage outfall for making this pipe installation, all of the roadway construction also is halted because you can't, that's the first part of the project. So if you hold this up, basically you've got, and you've seen their change, their, well, I don't know if you've noticed, but their, their month work has been over a million dollars a month. Two, the first month, and 1.5 the second month. So they're making a lot of progress. If you're holding them up for a month to go through the process of discussing a change order, negotiating it, driving it through court and getting approval before doing the work, you're, you're going to, you're going to, so, let me just say, so I saved, part of myself, I've worked with a contractor on this to lower the ramifications of it. Originally, they wanted about $25,000 on this and we worked them down to this $14,637 based on negotiation. So we're, we're fighting for every, every penny out there. But if we would have held them up, then they could have filed a claim of all of the, all of the work that you're, you're, you're either demobilizing their whole forces and their equipment or you're causing it to sit, it puts us in a liability issue.
And also, Cory, this was, this was, this was something that was not there when they actually bid on the job.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it kind of, the kind of, it kind of.
The runway was there, but not the concrete. So this is Joseph Oak area.
Okay, who, who has, who has the authority? Is it you and Gary and the judge or who to approve these?
I can.
You got a contingency item. You got a change order contingency item. And it's going to be, a lot of it's going to be chewed up, but I mean, it's still there.
Right. So actually, this one was already done. I went ahead and put it on court, but technically they could be, it's under 50, anything under 50,000, I could work with George to do directly.
Okay, so you, can you keep us abreast of how much of that continues as being eaten up each court? I mean, or when?
Yes, I can. I think it's, yes. And so the, the key though is what I.
I don't, I don't want to impede progress for sure.
Right.
We keep up with it.
Yes, I agree. And so that was the other part. So last court, I believe, either last court or the court before, y'all, y'all approved the process of George and I essentially, you know, working ahead for this type of issue. But the second part of it is that all of these change orders have to go on court so that the public record and the total number is documented as we go along. So that it's not, you know, a big chunk at the end of.
I think that's, I think that's a good way to do it too.
Right.
Okay, we've got Mike Leslie back on the phone. Let's go back to that, if that's okay. Have you got your questions answered there, Jim?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're going to go back to nine. Mike, I think the question was about the floor on the double bow community building.
Yes, sir.
The bid was $54,000 and we had a $50,000 contingency on top of that, making a bid $104,000.
Well, that bid includes, that bid includes new doors, doors in the building and a new ceiling throughout the community building and the kitchen, okay? The $50,000 was, they wanted work done in the kitchen and they wanted us to put in stainless steel cabinets and, you know, that kind of thing.
Is that a benefit also?
That, that, that the FEMA would not pay for anybody to design the kitchen part. So to the best of our ability, since we're basically bidding ourselves, we put $50,000 in there contingency to cover the work in the kitchen. If we save money, we get the money back instead of just trying to figure out, pick, you know, this and that and, and, and bid it up.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Did you get your questions answered there, Jimmy?
Yes, sir. I'm good.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, the other, 19?
19.
And that was approved change order number five in the amount of $24,000 for Kilgore Regional Drainage, segment two, to repair bank sloughing failure.
My main deal was on that there, I mean, have, have we done our cash call with our partners? Is this part of that? Where we at on that? I mean, or recovering all the costs on all the repairs?
I, I don't, Billy, have you talked to them?
Actually, I did. I emailed a change order out to all of them to make them aware and ask them if they had any objections. Nobody had any objections. Everybody knew this was coming. Quite frankly, it's a lot lower cost than we were afraid it would be.
Billy, that was my question. I was really surprised to see a, a $24,000 and some change. I was expecting that number to be, quite honestly, 40 to 50 grand. Was my crazy.
No, you thank your county engineer for that, even after getting all the engineering done and Soul's report ended, yeah, ended up doing the exact same thing Cory was recommending in the first place.
Thank you, Cory. Thank you, Billy.
I actually believe that the first price that we got from the contractor was about $100,000 to do these repairs.
Wow, so my 50 grand was way off. Okay.
All, all this, all this sloughing off and stuff like this, I mean, is this something that we couldn't call during the design stage? I mean, we paid a lot of money to our designers to, to look at all this here and we seem like every time we, we coming back.
You got, you got too many, you got too many different riders of soul through there.
You got too many, you got too many variables that you can't control until you actually put boots on the ground. Am I right, Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, and, and the thing about it, you know, I started on a canal board and that was something we kept busy. You know, the canals, the higher you have the water, the sloughing you have. But the top of the bank cracks and it puts the water, the water goes into cracking, undercuts you. I mean, it's, there's been problems here from, you know.
This is, this is percolation of, of groundwater that comes through and, and there's just.
Shallow water sands.
Yes, right. And so you've got water that kind of moves through soil down a few deep, a few feet deep in soils. And you don't, you know, you don't really know that they're, it's not a huge amount, but it doesn't take much water to start causing damage. That's what happens. It, it percolates through and makes its way out to these banks. And where it does, it creates a, it breaks the friction of the soils and allows a sloughing to occur.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate you working on it and saving the taxpayer's money. But Billy, you said that this will be part of a cash call for the parts or what?
Yeah, our, our share of it's roughly 51%.
Okay, yes. Okay, that was it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
So I so moved that we approved the.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We, we, we just, we, we're going to go through and get ones we have a problem with. Jimmy's, those are the three you had, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
No, you, your, your turn. Do you have anything you want to talk before we vote on this?
No, sir.
Want to pull? Billy?
Yes, sir. I'd like to pull item six into executive session. And it's also tied with item five, so pull that before we vote, take it into executive session, vote on it.
On six and five?
Yeah.
Good point, Billy.
Okay, and any others? Any others, Billy?
No, that's all.
Okay, so.
Well, actually, that, no, no, Judge, four also budget amendments. That's, that's all tied together.
Yeah, that's five and six, basically, right guys?
We're going to pull four, five, and six for executives. Basically talking about that, that, I don't know if that's going to be a discussion in the executive session, but we won't vote on that.
The payroll, the payroll will be discussion in executive races.
Okay, we have, we have the rest of these items that, that doesn't have a mark on. The only one I have, I'd like, I'd like to consider that, that we've been missing on 21. You know, we're going to approve the renewal of the interlocal agreement with Polk County for housing of Chambers County inmates. I'd like to see a report, you know, of, basically once a month or so to, to let us know how many, how many inmates we, we have out, how much we're paying. I think that would be an asset to us. You know, we've always, we've talked about jail and, and different ways of trying to get this thing moving forward. But that kind of information would help if we could get that information and whether we get it by email or whatever.
We do get it out of county jail.
Yeah, I mean, I've been, I would like to have that as well and also the count in our jail. We used to get that and we hadn't been getting it in a while and.
Well, my disco, Lauren just told me that, that they get it, so.
The auditor's office sends that out so I can send a request for y'all to be on the email chain so you can.
Just an asset that, that we, you know, when we get questions about taxpayers about this, it'd be valuable information for us to have.
Right.
That cost needs, we need to have that cost. We didn't, we haven't been giving, but that'll be correct. Okay, so let's, let's take everything but four, five, and six and we'll bring those back after executive session. So I'll entertain a motion that we approve all other on the consent agenda.
So moved, Gary, Judge.
Commissioner Tice?
Tag it.
Is that Commissioner Gore?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? There are none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, both carries. All right. We're going to go down here to executive session. It is.
Wait, you say which ones you're taking?
We're taking four, five, and six.
And you're taking 3.2.
And we're taking 3.2.
And the two items under executive session, which I accidentally labeled them both 20.1.
And the two items under, oh, we are, sorry, my fault. Are we offline?
No, we're, we're back on.
Okay, we got also the, the 2.1, discuss and consider status, or 20.1, discuss and consider status update regarding potential litigation relating to county employee complaints. And, and I guess it'd be 20.2, mislabeled, discuss and consider request for county remedial action relating to damages. And this is going to be, we're going to executive session under section of section 551 dash point 074. Personnel and also section 551 point 071, consultation with. And 551 point 7072, deliberations regarding real property. So we are going to executive session. It is 10:55. We're, we're journeying from Commissioners Court. Anybody, everybody okay? Or they take a break or?
I see.
Okay. Okay, well, we're going to get the recorder and I need to turn this, I need to turn these off.
So we're going to take three minutes.
Down here, down here at the bottom.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're going to, we'll take, we'll take a couple minutes if you need it. We're off, we're offline for, so.
Yep. So.
I told you, I thought somebody was going to pull it.
No, yeah, I figured.
Um.
I told, one sec.
Okay, we're ready to rock.
Okay, it's 12:25 PM. We adjourned from executive session and we've gone back into Commissioner's Court, regular session. So, item number three two, we've decided to table. Item number twenty dash one, no action. Item twenty dash two, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Judge, that we allow the county attorney and purchasing agent to address remedial damages brought forth in executive session.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gore, second by Commissioner Cohen. Any other thing, any other discussion? It's all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, motion carries. Okay, back on the consent agenda, item number four, five, and six.
Right.
We, we have a, we have a direction to pull two forty-nine, page two forty-nine, page two fifty, two fifty-one, page two fifty-two, and page two fifty-three, and everything associated with those five pages. And other than that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve four, five, and six. With every other thing that's on those, when the payroll changes approved, other than the ones that we pull for next court.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Cohen makes a motion. Commissioner Ty seconds it. Any questions or comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
I agree.
Oh, motion carries. That being done, if anything I missed.
Great job today, Judge Nelson.
Don't say that too loud. We, we are, we are adjourned, thank you, and at twelve twenty-eight, thank y'all for yours.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cohen, I'm about to call you. All right. Thank you, sir.
Take care.